Then we end up studying based on war. And I'm not interested in that.
Robin D.G. Kelly, Professor of U.S. History at UCLA. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you very much.
It's Here and Now. China's spy balloon.
This episode has been much more of a failure for them than a success, precisely because of the intelligence that they lost, the trade craft that has now been very compromised by losing this balloon.
But it's given us a rare glimpse into that spy craft between the U.S. and China. So what have we learned? That's on the next On Point. Join us for On Point, weekday evenings at 7:00 on Radio IQ. Radio IQ is supported by Mark Nelson and Virginia Wills Trusts and Estates, a Charlottesville law firm specializing in estate planning, wills, trusts, and probate. VAWills.com. Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston, where the program is produced, and your NPR station; from MathWorks, creators of MATLAB and simulating software for technical computing and model-based design. MathWorks, accelerating the pace of discovery in engineering and science. Learn more at mathworks.com. And Noom, providing an online evaluation and the tools to help people lead healthier lives through behavior change. More information at noom, N-O-O-M, dot com. It's Here and Now. Last night, what's become an American ritual was repeated, a gunman killing three people, wounding five others on a school campus, Michigan State University in East Lansing, just hours before the marking of the fifth anniversary of the murders at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida. On this day in 2018, seventeen people were killed, seventeen injured, the worst high school shooting in the country's history. Ryan Petty's fourteen-year-old daughter, Elena, was among those who died. He spoke with Fox News this morning.
You don't think gun control would solve these problems. There's too many guns already in the hands of Americans across the country. The thought that we can pass some new gun control law and protect our schools just doesn't make any sense.
But others were hoping for gun control in the wake of Parkland. So what happened? WLRN reporter Gerard Albert III joins us. And Gerard, just briefly, how are people there responding to another shooting, you know, on the cusp of this day?
You know, today's a tough day in general for the Parkland community. They're pretty tight-knit. They were before the shooting. They are even more after the shooting. You know, not to say that they're used to it, but it hurts a little extra today on the eve of the five-year anniversary.
Hurts extra. Well, let's take a look. In the aftermath of Parkland, survivors created that March for Our Lives movement. And that way...
At this time, I would like to invite Reverend Jake Hooker to come to the podium. And if you are so willing, once he has a few minutes to discuss the church that he is currently pastoring and give us a little update on that, then he will lead us in prayer. And if you're so willing, you'll stand with us. Immediately following that, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance and invite you to join us in that also. Pastor Jake.
Hello, thanks for having me again. And I guess this is the part where I have to talk about the church, right?
Yes, it is.
Well, my name's Jake Hooker, and I am Pastor Providence Presbyterian Church. We meet in Salem at the American Legion. And I tell everybody that if you don't know where the American Legion is, then look for the Army tank. If you don't know about the Army tank, then look for the volleyball courts. Usually, one of those two things give it away. But we've been meeting now for about a year, and we're a new church, and just happy to be here.
Thank you. Go ahead, if you'd rise, please.
Let's pray together. Dear Father, we thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy in this country. We thank you for the freedoms of speech and religion and press and assembly, the right to petition. But we take for granted often these great freedoms and opportunities that we have here in this country that are often unexistent in other parts of the world. We thank you for the many blessings that you've poured out upon our nation, upon the state of Virginia, and upon our beloved Roanoke County. We thank you for this nation and for this wonderful community. We do pray for all people living all over the world. We do pray for world peace and prosperity. But today, we especially lift up to you, the people of Roanoke County. The psalmist reminds us that good will come to those who are generous and lend freely and conduct their affairs with justice. May this be true of Roanoke County. May this be a place where goodness and generosity and justice are known. And so we do pray to that end. We pray for peace. We pray for prosperity. We pray for justice. We pray for economic growth. And that you would restrain the things that harm so many people in the county. We do also pray a special blessing upon the Board of Supervisors, that you would give them wisdom and discernment as they approach the different items on their agenda. May the decisions that are made today and in the weeks and months and years to come, may they be of great benefit to the people living in Roanoke County. May this board also discharge their duties with humility, recognizing that this position that they have, Lord, has come from you. It's from your hand. Bless each member, we pray. Your word reminds us that we have not because we ask not. And so we boldly ask for great and marvelous things for Roanoke County. And we ask all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jake.
So, good afternoon and welcome to our regular meeting for February 14th, 2023. Regular meetings are held on the second and fourth Tuesday at 3:00 p.m. Public hearings are held at 7:00 p.m. on the fourth Tuesday of each month. Deviations from this schedule will be announced. The meetings are broadcast live on RV TV Channel 3 and will be rebroadcast on Thursday at 7:00 p.m. and on Sunday at 10:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. Board of Supervisors meetings can also be viewed online through Roanoke County's website at www.roanokecountyva.gov. Our meetings are closed captioned, so it is important for everyone to speak directly into the microphones at the podium. Individuals who require assistance or special arrangements to participate in or attend Board of Supervisors meetings should contact the clerk to the board at 540-772-2005 at least forty-eight hours in advance. Please turn all cell phones off or place on silent. So the first item on the board in opening ceremonies is our roll call. If the clerk would please call the roll. Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
Mr. Norworth?
Here.
Mr. Radford?
Here.
Mrs. Hooker? Here. Item B, request to postpone, add to, or change the order of agenda items. Any fellow board members wish any changes? Mr. Lubek?
No changes, Madam Chair.
Mr. Kaywood?
No changes.
Thank you. Item C, proclamations, resolutions, recognitions, and awards. Resolution expressing the appreciation of the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County to Stephen A. McGraw upon his retirement after more than thirty-nine years of service. Mr. Kaywood, County Administrator, Rhonda Purdue, Clerk of Circuit Court.
Madam Chair, members of the board, this resolution does express our gratitude for Steve for all this many years of service. And I believe Rhonda would like to come up and say a few words because she is far more familiar with his day-in, day-out work. I just find it interesting when we look back through some of our historical pictures just to see all the different things he's done over the years. And we've got quite a collection. But we look forward to hearing Rhonda's remarks.
Good afternoon. We're here today to recognize Steve and his years of service on the board, his two terms on the board, and his four terms as Circuit Court Clerk. We all know what he's done while he was on the Board of Supervisors and while his term in office. But you guys don't know what he was like as a boss. And that's what I would like to tell you. That's what I would like to tell you all today. Steve was always clear on his expectations of all of us. There were fifteen deputy clerks in all. And we knew what our expectations were, but he was also very fair. If a mistake was made or something came to his attention, we sat, we talked, and he held us accountable, as he should, but was never... I don't know what the word is. He never came down on us in a way that made us feel inferior or that we were bad at our jobs. He would always let us make suggestions. He would let us go to all the trainings and come back. And if the Supreme Court was offering a new service or a new system, we would come back. I do remember coming back. I think it was 2016. We came back saying, "We want to do this. We want to do that." And he said, "Pick one." He didn't say no. He just said, "Pick one." So we did. He did not only want the office as a whole to succeed, but he wanted us as individuals to succeed. And as for me, I cannot thank you enough for everything you've done for me. Because if it weren't for him and his hiring me all those years ago, I would not be standing here in front of you all today. I just, I hope you're proud of the work that you've done over all of this time. You're a good person. And I hope you're proud of the difference that you've made in the county.
I'm very proud of you.
So I'm looking for a motion. I would like to move adoption of the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
And would the clerk please call the roll? And then we'll ask you to read the resolution, and I'll come down and join you. Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Ready? I'm going to read the resolution. Sorry. Resolution expressing the appreciation of the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County to Stephen A. McGraw, Clerk of Circuit Court, upon his retirement after more than thirty-nine years of service. Whereas Stephen A. McGraw was employed by Roanoke County on January 1, 1984, and whereas Mr. McGraw retired on February 1, 2023, after thirty-nine years and one month of devoted, faithful, and expert service to Roanoke County. And whereas Mr. McGraw has served on the Board of Supervisors from 1984 through 1991, serving as Board Chairman in 1985 and 1991, and Board Vice Chairman in 1990. Mr. McGraw served with distinction on the Blue Ridge Region Commission... I can't say this word. Suscumbential Committee, Roanoke Valley Cooperation Committee, Cable Vision Committee, Cable Vision Negotiating Subcommittee, and the Roanoke County Resource Authority. Mr. McGraw further served the citizens as President of the Virginia Association of Counties, President of the Blue Ridge Region of Virginia, Inc., a member of the Grayson Commission, and Chairman of the VACO VML Task Force on Annexation. Mr. McGraw has served as Clerk of the Circuit Court from January 1, 1992 through his retirement on February 1, 2023. Mr. McGraw served as President of the Virginia Court Clerks Association in 2001. And whereas Mr. McGraw, through his employment with Roanoke County, has been instrumental in improving the quality of life and providing services to the citizens of Roanoke County. And whereas throughout Mr. McGraw's tenure with Roanoke County, he has always enjoyed and is deeply appreciative of the constant support he received from his family, friends, staff members, coworkers, and especially the voters of Roanoke County. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Roanoke County expresses its deepest appreciation and the appreciation of the citizens of Roanoke County to Stephen A. McGraw for more than thirty-nine years of capable, loyal, and dedicated service to Roanoke County. And further, the Board of Supervisors does express its best wishes for a happy and productive retirement.
Absolutely. Congratulations.
Sure. First of all, there's no better feeling than leaving the office in the hands of Rhonda Purdue because she's been there twenty-six years. She's been our chief deputy for seven years. And she took the lead on almost all of our initiatives over the years, especially in regard to technology. It's been a great office to be honored by serving in it. And I particularly want... You ought to know how important you've been and county staff in particular have been. I never ask anybody anywhere in Roanoke County for assistance that I did not get it. And they were always extremely good at it and more than happy to help. And so that meant a lot in various periods of time, especially during the pandemic. And so finally, thanks to the voters of Roanoke County. And I have the two ladies who are most important in my life, my wife, thank you, behind me, and the former chief deputy, now Circuit Court Clerk, Rhonda Purdue. Thank you again.
Anybody want to say anything?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, Steve, but I just want to thank you for welcoming me on the board back in 2018. And I haven't seen much of you since that first year. But sometimes we've been drinking water out of a fire hose, if you know what I mean.
Yes, sir.
But I do appreciate your support, and I appreciate everything you've done for Roanoke County over the years. And have fun in your retirement.
Thank you. I'm going to do that, I promise, in Florida.
Yeah, Mr. McGraw, I came into the family business in eighty-eight. I know you were on the Board of Supervisors. I applaud you for doing that. And that's a lot of campaigns you've run since that up to where you are now. So you probably need to put your feet up and rest for a little bit now. But we never... While you were on the board, I can't remember us ever having any of our projects come before your board for rezoning. But Roanoke County's always been a friendly place for realtors. And your real estate background really played well in those early days as you gained momentum in that position. So thank you very much and have a blessed, you know, retirement.
Thank you.
Mr. Mahoney?
Two comments. As an attorney, I know this may sound like a lot of inside baseball, but the Circuit Court Clerk's office is critical to the interaction of the court system with the judges and the attorneys. And I think if you go back and you look at many of the projects and the programs that Steve implemented under his watch while he was clerk to the Circuit Court, has really made that a much better office in terms of handling the heavy workload as you go through all the clerk's office and Circuit Court work. And so I think you have to applaud Steve in terms of what he was able to accomplish over those many years. My second comment is, for all those citizens in Roanoke County and particularly in Cave Spring that are unhappy with me, they can blame Steve because Steve was on the board that hired me back in 1984 as county attorney. So it's his fault.
Take full responsibility. Look how well you've done.
Well, I'm not an attorney, but I will say to you that I thank you for your service to Roanoke County, and I wish you the happiest of retirements.
Thank you.
And Steve, I just want to echo the sentiment, but also say it's just so remarkable, the things that you were able to accomplish in your term as a supervisor. I know the one that amazes me the most is the landfill. And live to tell about it. It's just really pretty remarkable.
Living through, putting that in my precinct was an accomplishment.
Quite a challenge, and live to tell about it, yeah.
But don't forget, it always takes three votes. It wasn't just me, it was two other people.
That's right. We appreciate you.
Thank you. She can't... Chair, would you like to be in the photo room? You're welcome. Last chance.
It's an honor.
Come back next week, they won't know. Rhonda, you need to be over here, too.
Item C2, recognition of Regional Center for Animal Care and Protection, Employee of the Year, Anna Rikio. Am I saying that correctly? Oh, good. Mr. Kaywood, County Administrator. Mike Warner, interim executive director for the Regional Center for Animal Care and Protection. Melinda Rector, Director of Operations for the Regional Center for Animal Care and Protection.
And Madam Chair, members of the board, this is going to be a little bit of one end of the spectrum to another. Steve has just completed a very long career, and Anna is just getting started out. But one of the privileges I have serving as county administrator is sitting on the board of the RCA CP. And as I think you all know, that's a partnership we have with Bonnetonka County, the city of Roanoke. It used to be the town event, although we've assumed their responsibilities on that body. And that being said, though, we're the fiscal agent, and all the employees of the RCA CP are county employees. And one of the things I've really strived to do in this role is to recognize our folks. And it turns out, for a number of years, the RCA CP has selected an employee of the year. And we talked about this at our last meeting. So I wanted Mike to have an opportunity to introduce Anna and explain some of the things that she's done in service to the RCA CP and the broader community that led her to being named the employee of the year for them.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity to stop by today to recognize our employee of the year at the Regional Center for Animal Care and Protection. Each year, our employees nominate an employee and write me a little synopsis on why they believe this employee is worthy of this. And this is based on teamwork and the ability to work together and care for animals. And this year, the employees have selected Anna Rikio, who is here today. Anna started with us in 2021 in our foster program. And currently, right now, she's serving in our media section, does all of our social media posts and website, and keeps up with soliciting food and stuff like that for the shelter and does a fantastic job. She has a very good knack for writing in social media and having people come together and donating to the shelter. About two weeks ago, our food pantry was empty. Our food pantry serves about four hundred animals a month, and that keeps the animals out of the shelter. People come by that are having some difficulty times and can't afford the food. And the citizens in our valley donate that food to the shelter so we can give it back out to them. She wrote a post, and within the next day, UPS and postal service was at her front door with about forty big boxes of dog food. So she does a fantastic job. While working with us, she finished her degree from Roanoke College and majored in criminal justice. I was hoping Chief Poindexter was not going to be here. He'll be trying to... He'll be trying to recruit her, so we're going to sneak out the back door as soon as this is over. But she's just a joy. She just has a very calming effect in the shelter, and it's just a joy to see. As a seasoned county employee, it is fun to see new people come into the organization young, right out of school, and just see them with their ideas and do things that kind of makes the old people grow a little bit. So it's been a very good pleasure in watching her grow over the last year and a half. So we do have a little plaque for her that we'd like to give her in that recognition, Anna.
Thank you.
At this time, if y'all would just join me in recognizing her as our Employee of the Year.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right. Well, I'll keep it short and sweet. I just want to thank you guys for having me today and recognizing me with this award. And I have some wonderful bosses that make it really easy to show up every day, and obviously the kittens and puppies help, too. So I really enjoy what I do, and I hope to be here for a lot more time.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Anna. We appreciate what you're doing. It's definitely a good work. I know that our family has adopted a dog from the center, and we love that dog. Any other commentary? Any other? Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Briefing of the Board of Supervisors with an annual update from the Greater Williamson Road Area Business Association. Valerie Brown, Executive Director, Greater Williamson Road Area Business Association. Valerie, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, and thank you very much for this opportunity to come before you again and talk and brag a bit about the Greater Williamson Road Area Business Association. But just as with my last visit, when I shared a video on Williamson Road in the county, today I would also like to begin with a video that was prepared by RV TV, and it shows a bit about what we've been up to since my last visit. So Debbie, we'll play that. Today, we are celebrating the christening, the opening, the celebrating of the Williamson. The Williamson, where we offer desk hotels, i.e. open-air desk spaces, private offices, and a shared conference room, all fully furnished, affordable, practical, convenient, offering the seats for creative mojo as our window boast. As you will see, creative mojo, it is real. Here at the Williamson, we offer that in-between spot from when they first have their dream until they are ready to go out there and have their own office space. We offer every office piece that they need, whether it's Wi-Fi capability, we offer printing, we offer copying, we offer faxing, anything that an office would want, but that you, as an individual, would not be able to afford on your own.
It's a beautiful place. I came in May when everything was just starting to build up, and I love how everything turned out.
Who can afford a $7,000 printer when you're just getting started? And so all of that was here, and I was able to open my doors, and it's been six weeks, and business is just booming and taking off. And I just want to say thank you all so much for the support.
We're excited that where we sit is smack in the middle of where the city and the county come together. So if you go out of our parking lot now and you turn right, you're in the county. If you turn left, you're in the city. And I like the idea, the vision in my head, that we're joining the two together.
Roanoke County has, for many years, joined a partnership with the Greater Williamson Road Area Business Association. And during Val's tenure, relationships have grown between Roanoke County and the association, creating an environment for engagement and collaboration. The Williamson fits nicely into the Holland Center Plan, which will develop more walkable, mixed-use opportunities in the Holland's area.
It's our hope that we can be the place where dreams can begin. Whether the solopreneur is established or just starting out and in need of office space outside their home, car, or local coffee spot, we are that solution.
To learn more about office spaces at the Williamson, email valerie@williamsonroad.org
Thank you. I always feel like that's a big commercial when it gets to the end, it gives my phone number. But now I'd like to bring us to today. With January 2, 2023, I began year five as the Executive Director for the Greater Williamson Road Area Business Association. Today, I would like to share with you what we have accomplished, particularly in just a few short years, then some of our plans moving forward. The Williamson Road Area Business Association, or RABA as it has been known, was begun almost 42 years ago with the intention to help pursue endeavors to improve the economic -- oops, I lost the page. I apologize. -- to improve the economic strength and enhance the quality of life of the Williamson Road Area Business Corridor and its surrounding areas. We have come a long way in 42 years, but never so far as we have come in the past five years. As an example, we are now known as the Greater Williamson Road Area Business Association, or GRABA, or even better, just Williamson Road. During this time, we have also added, as a further incentive for what we do, the provision to provide added assistance to help business recruitment and retention, as well as plan for the development and revitalization of the area that brings us into Roanoke County. These past almost five years added to the 40 years before have clearly evidenced Williamson Road's commitment to the areas of economic development, county beautification, strategic planning, and public safety. The image and reputation of the Williamson Road Area Business Association has continued to grow stronger. As a solid example of that, and in recognition that Williamson Road is truly a microcosm of the world with so many international restaurants and businesses, we have, in our fiscal year 2024 work plan and its overarching strategic plan, developed additional guidelines to set up inroads into the ethnic communities to build relationships and be responsive to the greater community. Briefly, just a few highlights of what we have been able to accomplish. We have spent significant time relationship-building. We want the businesses to know we are here for them, no matter what their needs are. We have monthly luncheons with almost 100 business owners attending every month. In support of our restaurants, we instituted Passport Travel the World on Williamson Road, highlighting our many restaurants and their international cuisines. During the pandemic, we hosted pop-up drive-in movies in the back four acres behind our neighbor over at Fort Knox Storage Facility. We held seven different weekend movie nights and had well over 2,000 families in attendance over that period of time. And always thinking bigger, last summer, we submitted a grant to the Department of Housing and Community Development with a proposal to build a shared office work center, an incubator, if you will, the Williamson, as you saw, for all new and existing small businesses. The grant, in the amount of $150,000, was awarded to us and was used as seed money to build the shared office space we have today, allowing us to begin a strong business revitalization on Williamson Road that reaches both into the county and into the city. This space acts as a brewing ground for the next generation of business owners by offering startup businesses both training and networking opportunities. And as an aside, I would like to say our private offices are all full, and we have a waiting list, so we are on the right track with that. And the plan with all of this is that these businesses are ready to be, once they're ready to become store owners or renters out in the real world, as they call it, they will look to locate on the Greater Williamson Road area, again, both bringing business to the county and the city. And then, for the first time this year, Williamson Road took part in National Night Out, which was held in August. We had well over 1,000 people enjoy Williamson Road, meet and visit with our first responders, and everyone walked away having had a good time. So these last four years were certainly successful and fun, but now I'd like to share a tiny bit of what's coming up next. People often hear me talk of the diversity and international flavor of Williamson Road. 2023 for us is the year to celebrate this honor and to work with and for our businesses and their owners. And much of this celebration will be through events. We want to include all those who make up a Greater Williamson Road, as well as those who support us. We work hard in meetings, but a lot of work gets done while you play as well. So I would just like to pinpoint these dates that I would love you to put on your calendars. Stemming from our grant last year, we are hosting a public art project, which will find its home on a large blank wall, a large blank canvas, if you will, on the side of our current building. We are asking and inviting local area artists to submit and then create their visions celebrating the international flavor of Williamson Road, either in history, its history, its people, or its businesses, again, all through their art. In May, actually in Cinco de Mayo, to be international, we will be hosting our first golf tournament, Swing for the Grain, so please plan to join us. The purpose of the tournament is, first of all, to have fun, and, second of all, to help us raise money to support a new endeavor we are initiating this year. With 2023, we are initiating a mini facade grant program. This program will allow us to help our business owners. I truly believe that if we take our businesses seriously, so will their owners. With this grant, we will be offering business owners the opportunity to apply for small facade grants for improvements to the entrances of their businesses, for instance landscaping, painting, awnings, windows, doors, et cetera, to help make their front more attractive, more inviting, and just pretty and want to be there. There's a lot more to this program that at some time I would like to share with you, but right now, I just want to add that we are pretty excited about this. And the important thing is to share that all the net proceeds from this event moving forward and any of our other events will be put into the pot for this facade grant program. And we are also pursuing grants to help fund this project as well. We again are going to take part in National Night Out in August, and our plan this year is to invite neighborhoods to join us for their celebrations at our Williamson Road location, rather than having it be and/or I want everything to be both. So we want to join with the neighborhoods and help them out as well. And then lastly, please mark your calendars for Saturday, October 14, when we will be hosting our first annual International Wine and Food Festival, which we are co-sharing with the Burgland Center, and we'll be celebrating the diversity of not only food and wine, but everything that makes up Williamson Road. So to conclude, many would say that the Greater Williamson Road Area Business Association is comprised of a close-knit community, and we really are. But at the same time, we want to continue to grow as many businesses as possible. Williamson Road, Peters Creek, Plantation Road are all areas that we are excited to work with, with the county, to help grow and to help prosper. That is one of our big 2023 goals. And with regards to our membership, our biggest asset, our goal is to increase our footprint. We want businesses to be aware of who we are, what we can do to help them, whether it be big or small, to help connect businesses into a powerful network through opportunities such as leadership sessions, advocacy programs, and mentorship opportunities. So we have accomplished a great deal, and there is so much more to do. I am told by my board often that I have a new idea every day, and maybe I do, but it's because there are so many businesses and so many people who love Roanoke County and love Williamson Road and who want to work hard there, and they actually do work hard. So with my board, we look forward to working with and for them and with all of you in the county to make our road a better, actually, the best, area to live and work. We look forward to our collaborations and opportunities with and for the county in the coming days, weeks, months, and years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Valerie. Any quick comment before we move on? Appreciate the update. Yes, Mr. North?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Valerie, in fact, I think I was one of the first people that you met. Mike Bailey brought me by your office and introduced me to you. And from where you were to where you are now, you've taken quantum leaps, and we're pleased to be part of that and assisting the Williamson Road business area going forward. And it's just remarkable, the impact you've had. And, you know, each year it gets better and better, so, you know, no good deed goes unpunished, which you did last year will have to exceed it this year, and I know it will, and especially with the golf tournament. That's something new, too, I believe, that you're having. So congratulations. Keep up the good work. You got a good team, and I think Alex has been helping out a little bit in the community development. He's on your board now. So thank you for your message today.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Valerie.
And if you're ever available on the third Tuesday of every month, we have our luncheons over at the Holiday Inn. Phil has been to several, so please join us.
And by the way, I think guest speaker is going to be Chief Poindexter.
He is.
And Martha, our chair, is going to, I think, join us that day as well. And anyone else on the board?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Item E1, resolution directing the Roanoke County Planning Commission to study and make recommendations regarding potential amendments to Section 30-82-13.1 of the Roanoke County Code, the county's cluster subdivision ordinance. Mr. Lubek, county attorney.
And good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. And I'm bringing this matter before you today at the request of Supervisor Mahoney. I will share a brief summary and suspect that he may have some comments when I'm finished. Section 30-82-13.1 of the Roanoke County Code sets forth what we call the county's cluster subdivision ordinance for the development of single-family dwellings. The intent of this ordinance is to facilitate the preservation of view sheds and conservation areas by allowing, under certain conditions, such areas to be combined with a denser, more compact level of residential development. At present, such cluster subdivisions are allowed only in residentially zoned districts, that would be R1, R2, R3, and R4. Such subdivisions must be at least 10 acres in size, and at least 45% of the gross acreage of the tract must be dedicated as open space or as a conservation area. Historically, this cluster subdivision option has been seldom used in developing neighborhoods. And at this time, it has been proposed that the board refer this matter to the Planning Commission for review and recommendation as to whether the provisions of this ordinance could be reasonably expanded so as to expand its use while still preserving its intent and purpose. And I would be happy to answer any questions you have or defer to Mr. Mahoney at this time.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. I asked Mr. Lubek to prepare this resolution. I also chatted briefly with Mr. Thompson to try to get a better idea of some of the historical uses that we've made, that builders and developers in our community have made of this ordinance. And it appears that while it's been used a few times, I don't think it met the original intent when the county adopted this many years ago. And at the same time, I was approached by one of our builders, developers in our community, Mr. Alexander Boone, and he Mr. Alexander Boone, and he raised some questions about it with me, and I wanted to look a little more closely into it. At the same time, I've been reading a lot of articles and statements, both at the national, the federal level, and at the state level, that there's a lot of criticisms of local governments with respect to our land use ordinances, that we make it very difficult for new housing to be developed in our communities. And when I look at Roanoke County, we, we don't have a lot of easily developable land left in Roanoke County. A lot of our remaining parcels have some steep slopes, or, or conservation areas, or watershed areas, that I think there is some flat area that can be used for development, but at the same time, could be, under the cluster ordinance, conserved, and you, you have a more dense development. I think there are some downsides to high-density development, and, but I also can see with the, the land patterns that we have remaining in the county, that I think there are some opportunities there where we can provide more housing, more housing opportunities for, for folks who want to move to, to Roanoke County. So, so with that idea, I'd, I'd like our planning commission to, to look more closely at this, to see if there are some amendments that might be beneficial, and to make this cluster ordinance provision in our code perhaps more welcoming and more usable. So with that, unless there are other comments or questions, I would move the adoption of the resolution.
And is there a second?
Second.
Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yeah, I would just like to comment, sorry during the voting, but, you know, I was around with the home builders when we were developing that cluster, and, and there was a heavy influence to preserve open space. And we looked at different scenarios to try to do that, and so, along with the PRD ordinance that we came out with, we came up with the, the cluster to try to help preserve open space. I agree with the developer and with Mr. Mahoney. It just, it didn't happen like we intended it to do, and I think this will be a big improvement of all to, you know, let us do that, that, you know, better density, those clusters, and, and be able to be a little more efficient with our, our remaining land. So, thank you, and I vote yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. Thank you. Item F, First Reading of Ordinances. Ordinance Amending the Fiscal Year 22-23 Budget for the General Operating Revenues and Expenditures by $6 Million and Appropriating $5 Million to the County's Capital Fund and $1 Million to the General Government Fund. Mr. Steve Elliott, Budget Administrator.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. We are presenting the first reading of an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget for the general operating revenues and expenditures by $6 Million and appropriating $5 Million to the county's capital fund and $1 Million to the general government fund. During a work session held with the Board of Supervisors on January 24th, 2023, to review mid-year general government revenues and expenditures, staff discussed the revenues, that revenues are trending above budget overall, but particularly in real estate tax, personal property tax, sales tax, business license tax, cigarette tax, and meals tax. Also, as costs have increased due to inflation, additional funding is required for the Bon Sac Fire Station project, the Parks and Recreation and Tourism offices at the Public Service Center project, tax relief for the elderly and handicapped and disabled veterans, and contracted repairs of apparatus and fleet vehicles. The amendment will increase the general government revenues budget by $6 Million and increase the general government expenditures by $500,000 for the tax relief for the elderly and handicapped and disabled veterans, $500,000 for contractor repairs, and $5 Million will be transferred to the capital fund to be used for the Bon Sac Fire Station capital project and for the offices for Parks and Recreation and Tourism at the Public Service Center project. Staff recommends approval of the first reading of ordinance and scheduling the second reading on February 28th.
Are there any questions for staff? Questions? Is there a motion?
I make a motion, Madam Chair, to approve the first reading and schedule the second reading for February 28th, 2023.
And is there a second?
Second.
And will the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
No.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. Thank you. Item 2, Ordinance Accepting $170,081 from the Virginia Office of Emergency Medical Services, Rescue Squad Assistance Fund, and Appropriating Such Funds, along with a local match of $170,081 to the Grant Fund, Accepting $216,831.85 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, and Appropriating Such Funds to the Capital Fund, Accepting $100,000 from the Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund, and Appropriating Such Funds to the Grant Fund, and Reallocating $396,507.15 from the County Capital Reserves, with $217,507.15 going to the Grant Fund, and $179,000 staying within the Capital Fund, for the purchase of two ambulances for the Fire and Rescue Department, and to complete the replacement of firearms for the Police Department. Mr. Travis Griffith, Chief of Fire and Rescue, Mr. Mike Poindexter, Chief of Police, Laurie Gearhart, Director of Finance and Management Services, welcome. Looks like it's just you, Laurie.
Yes. Chief Poindexter. Chief, are in the audience, if you do have additional questions. I told them I didn't think it was necessary for them to walk up here with me, but, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is to conduct the first reading of an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds for the purchase of two ambulances for fire and rescue, and increase the funding for the replacement of firearms for the Police Department. The county has received various funding sources which can go towards these purchases. In addition, we are asking for the remaining funds needed to be appropriated from the Capital Reserves. Chief Griffith and Chief Poindexter are here again, if you have further questions. But staff recommends approval of the first reading of the ordinance and scheduling the second reading for February 28th.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve item F2, first reading and schedule second reading for February 28th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. Item G, Appointments. Does any board member have an appointment that has not yet been given to the clerk? Okay, moving on to item H, Consent Agenda. All matters listed under the Consent Agenda are considered by the board to be routine and will be enacted by one resolution in the form or forms listed below. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed. Is anything need to be removed, board members? Is there a motion?
Madam Clerk, I would move to approve the Consent Agenda.
And is there a second?
Second.
And would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. Item I is Citizen Comments and Communications, and I have one speaker scheduled. Do we have any other speakers, Madam Clerk, besides this one?
Excuse me? I just have one scheduled to speak.
Unless there's, you might want to ask if there's anybody else that wanted to speak and hasn't filled out the paperwork.
I'm sorry?
She said you may want to ask if there's any more.
I will. I will, thank you. So, Mr. Scaff, if you would, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, although we know you. Welcome.
William Scaff, 4815 Farmington Place Court, Roanoke, Virginia, 24018. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. My statement is entitled, Capitalism in a Constitutional Republic. At the Barnett rezoning hearing, capitalism was given as a reason for eliminating residential zoning and approving commercial development. According to then-Chairman Mahoney, for instance, competition takes precedence and need is irrelevant, using the memorable comparison of grocery stores to car washes. What role does capitalism play in our constitutional republic, and in turn, what role should capitalism play in our zoning decisions? Capitalism is economic democracy. It is the appropriate economic system for our country, for a freedom-loving people. But as Milton Friedman observed, quote, "While necessary for freedom, capitalism alone is not sufficient to guarantee freedom. It must be accompanied by a set of values and by political institutions favorable to freedom," unquote. The free enterprise system occupies a particular place in the United States government. We are a constitutional republic, neither a pure democracy, as was Athens, nor a pure capitalist system first defined by Adam Smith. The Declaration and the Constitution override our economic system, which operates theoretically and legally under them. Both documents enumerate certain God-given, unannable rights. These rights include the right to property, according to Locke, which Jefferson broadened in the Declaration as happiness. These rights were incorporated in the Constitution as, quote, "life, liberty, or property," unquote, in the Fifth Amendment, and later repeated in the Fourteenth. Zoning and future land use planning are our way of protecting the rights of all property owners, both those who are already dwelling in homes, as well as those who want to build commercially. Thus, capitalism and competition are secondary and should not determine our zoning decisions alone, because the right to property and happiness in our founding and framing documents take precedence. They guarantee quality of life. Unfortunately, the majority of vote at the Barnett rezoning hearing did not consider our unannable rights. The motion to approve, voted unfavorably by three supervisors, says the rezoning request is good zoning practice, which is inaccurate factually, much less analytically. Everything from current zoning to future land use designations to surrounding residential properties to limited traffic infrastructure proclaims residential. The county has repeatedly stated, even by Supervisor North at the hearing, that we need more residential development. The motion to deny actually portrays the reality. The rezoning request, quote, "is inconsistent with the purpose and intent of the county's adopted comprehensive plan and good zoning practice," unquote. And if need is not a factor in rezoning decisions, then someone should have told that to the Economic Development Department under Jill Lupe, because her assessment that the Barnett Project will be, quote, "providing new retail shopping opportunities for residents," unquote, is all about need, however preposterous. From the standpoint of need, the adverse impact of this vote is broader than on those who will live and travel in the grocery store's vicinity. By preventing residential development at this site, this vote will deprive numerous county residents of needed housing opportunities, but at least they will now have three grocery stores within two minutes of each other. In community planning, accurately assessing need, realistically evaluating infrastructure, and preserving established neighborhoods are paramount. To make zoning decisions in favor of commercial developers when the facts are contrary and point to the opposite conclusion is to govern according to the benefit of special interests, not county residents. It is socialism, not capitalism, and as such, counter to the American system of government. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Item J, Reports. Is there a motion to receive and file the following reports?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. Item K, Reports and Inquiries of Board Members, and we'll start tonight with Mr. Mahoney.
Nothing.
Mr. Radford?
Yeah, just a couple things. In Mr. Kaywood's weekly report to us last week, he showed us a video of the Development and Community Planning Department, and I watched that whole thing. Like I do all of them. And, of course, I know those people in there, because I've been dealing with them since 1988. It was just neat to see Richard highlight that and get them involved, but the, the people that they interviewed, Bob Atkinson, I, I've really never dealt with him, but when I have a problem, I'll call him and ask him stuff. So, it's like free advice. And Denise keeps us all, us all as developers and builders organized and going in the right direction. She's, she's been a, a great asset to that, that department, and we appreciate Denise very much. Also, getting a lot of calls and emails, texts from citizens about our tax rate. We're going to be talking about that and, and the impact that it has on their, their ability to pay for those, those increased taxes, so we will definitely be taking that up. Thank you.
Mr. Peters?
Thank you. So to piggyback on what Mr. Radford just mentioned about our tax rate, I, too, unlike probably any other member of the board, I sit in the public every day. For anyone who says they have trouble getting to me, I always found that kind of funny, because it's not hard to find me there on Hardy Road in Benton. But I've had a lot of conversations with citizens in Mount Pleasant, some in the Bon Sac area, and then, of course, the ones there right directly in the Benton area. It's altered a lot of people. And so I sat back and started thinking about, I think it's been about 15 years since we've reduced the tax rate in Roanoke County. And I, I sat back to think about what has taken place in those 15 years, and a lot of good things have happened. County has maneuvered very well through a recession, through the COVID issues that we experienced just a few short years ago. We bolstered the county pay, especially in our public safety, and I'm proud to say this board has stood beside our public safety when it wasn't cool. So I'm glad that we, we've done that. We've continued building, county buildings and our schools. But then I look at, you know, the last, less than 10 years, I believe, we went from borrowing $10 Million annually to, in 2027, we'll be borrowing $20 Million annually. The last two years, we've had substantial surpluses at the end of the, end of each year, and last year, we had $12 Million roughly that we still haven't spent, which may answer why I've voted no on amending our current budget, when I feel like we have surplus monies we could spend rather than amending budgets, and I'm not a big favor, I'm not in favor of amending budgets mid-year anyway. We do work with our, we do work for our citizens, and I think to this point, we have done the right thing. We've maintained our buildings. We have increased public safety. We have done what we have to do to keep our citizens safe. But now I believe it's time that we give back to our citizens. We have put forth a debt plan that will take on the $20 Million. We know the operational costs of adding 18 more firefighters, and that's all, that's currently in our budget. And I'm here to say that I'm, I'm hearing from our citizens. I project, part of that's already been told to us, the other part, I'm sure, is probably on, in, in the works, but on the back of the napkin. You know, we're, we're going to reap about $11 Million more in real estate revenue, and I project probably about $8 to $9 Million in personal property. We heard from Steve earlier that just about all of our categories, cigarette tax, personal property, real estate, everything is above budget. I said I'd bring it forward, and I, and I am. I would like to see what a budget would look like if we did reduce the real estate taxes by five cents and personal property 20 to 30 cents. It's by my estimation, that still would be less than $10 Million. Roanoke County would still have more than $10 Million in new surplus to continue to provide the services to the county. I don't know that'll work, but I've had enough conversations, and we've had, I've had to go over enough of these figures with the constituents that, that I represent, that I think we owe it to them to make sure we're, we are looking at it. And as I've shared with all of them, after I reviewed the information, that to this point, we have, we, we've done a fantastic job. Our staff has done a fantastic job. Our employees are doing a fantastic job. But when you start having that much of surplus year over year, I think we're dipping too much into the pockets of our citizens, and as the inflation report came out again this morning, they're taking home less of their pay, because they're having to spend it on the, the items that they're needing to keep their family afloat. So, with that, Madam Chair, I'm done.
Mr. North?
Oh, thank you. I was going to talk about the tax situation. Oh, thank you. I was going to talk about the tax situation on more of a generic level, unlike Mr. Peters and Mr. Radford. But basically, I've responded to folks that have called me and written to me. Debbie sent a few letters, basically appreciating their concern, on their own assessments as well. Mine went up, too, this year. And, you know, so none of us up here on this board were immune to that. And as I indicated to some of the folks, we're not going to make a determination on real estate taxes until April 11. Between now and then, we're going to work with staff. We're going to analyze the many budget needs, and what steps are responsible to address their concerns, and not only in the real estate arena, but also in the personal property arena. And so, we'll be looking forward to those dialogues and conversations. I will tell you this, a couple folks, and I went and checked their numbers, too. Their, one person's went up $900 and some dollars more taxes. Another $768. And so, they were substantial amounts on just the real estate. So, we need to do something, and I'm sure we will do something in the direction of lower tax rates. On some general assembly news, bills are falling on the floor. If you went down there with 15, you might be lucky to have one or two left. They're now, in the next two weeks, going to try to negotiate a budget, a new budget amendment, if you will, to the existing budget. I-81 improvements, the Senate says $250 million, but doesn't say where, along the corridor of I-81. The House version says $150 million between exits 150 and 143. And as you know, the Smart Scale project failed in the eight exits. We tried to get for a $300-plus million repair to make it three lanes there between Aronto and Salem. So, something's going to happen. I believe $150 million is additional money needed to complete the projects between 150 and 143. So, talk about increases and inflation. Look at what it's done to our interstate highway system, not to mention other roads. The Catawba bill that Chairman Hooker and I have been following, and others, comes before the Senate Education Committee at 8:00 AM this Thursday. We've lobbied quite hard. Thank you, Mr. Lubek, for contacting the influential people on the Senate Education Committee. The Allegheny Regional Commission has also done the same. It looks like they're only going to give us $15 million if it passes and stays in the budget for planning going forward. And we've called for a joint meeting of the Regional Commission and other CAOs and chairs throughout the valley to come up sometime in March, we hope, to find out how we can contribute, not only from any grant standpoint, from the Opium Abatement Authority, but also from the monies that are coming into the different localities, because I'm sure the General Assembly is looking for some skin in the game next year when this comes back up to get full funding, which is probably about another $130 million, just to Phase 1 on that project. Lastly, I want to mention this. As I was perusing through the details, and I stayed awake, too, I found that there's a, in there's a $20 million budget item that was put in by the House on a bipartisan basis from, I think it was Senator Lucas, and also two delegates. And it was bipartisan because one of the delegates was Republican, the other was Democrat, to fund $20 million for the Chesapeake, Norfolk, and Portsmouth CTE school. We're going to follow this closely because what's going to happen is if that succeeds, and I think it probably will, we're going to use that as a template to share with our schools to come back next year and try to do the same thing. Because our school, the CTE school, is going to have a regional flavor, I understand, and more on that to come later. That's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. North. At this time, we have a work session, actually, two work sessions, one regarding an economic update, and the other for reviewing fiscal year 2324 projected general government fund, operating budget revenues, and review updates to the county of Roanoke, fee, capendium. So, we are now going to recess and go to the third floor for the work session.